These meetings are recorded and livestreamed for individuals to watch at their leisure. At this time, we do have a couple individuals to give us the land acknowledgement. I would ask that you introduce yourselves and tell us what school you are from. Thank you so very much for being here.
Hi, I'm Zupia and I'm from Central Middle School.
And Mary Lucimata is also from Central.
And what grade are you guys in?
Sixth.
And I'm an A.
Thank you very much.
Red Deer Public Schools acknowledges Treaty Six territory to the north of the Red Deer River. Treaty Six territory is the ancestral and traditional territory of the Cree, Dayne, Blackfoot, Salto, and Dakota Sioux.
We also acknowledge Treaty Seven territories to the south foot of Red Deer River. Treaty Seven territories is the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy, the Gena, Bikani, Sisega, as well as the Sutena First Nation and Stony Nakawla First Nation.
We acknowledge the land of Red Deer now on is also a traditional territory of the Maitis and we are part of Region Three with the Maitis Nation of Alberta.
We acknowledge and give thanks to all the many First Nations, Maitis, and Inuits whose footsteps have marked these lands for centuries. We are grateful for elders and traditional knowledge keepers who are still with us today and those who have gone before.
Recognizing and acknowledging land and acknowledging the traditional land is an act of reconciliation and show gratitude to those who territory this city.
Thank you so very much. I would ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. All right, in front of you, you have the meeting minutes from November 5th. Are there any additions, errors, changes? Have Seawater?
I'd like to make requests.
No.
Not yet?
No, this is, I'm just looking for approval of the minutes.
Sure.
November 5th, 2005, are there any errors, omissions, changes?
So moved.
Thank you very much, Trustee McCully. Meeting minutes from October 31st. I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Trustee Barrett Smith, all those in favor? Carried? Meeting minutes from October 27th.
Please add swearing-in ceremony after the approval of the agenda, please.
Approval of the minutes as amended for October 27th. Trustee Dolestra, all those in favor? Carried? Meeting minutes from October 8th.
Sorry, I think that was already said.
Oh, sorry, nope.
So moved.
Thank you very much, Trustee McCully, all those in favor? Carried? Friend you, you have an agenda for today's meeting. I have been asked for two separate motions to be added. I will add one as 10.1 Board Operations. By Trustee Waters. Second motion, Superintendent.
Yes? Point of order we got for this motion?
Yes.
It's a point of order regarding the motion to revote for the position of Vice Chair under the RDPSD Policy 7 Board Operation Section 1. The organizational meeting includes the election of Board Chair and Vice Chair. Once the election has been properly conducted and results are declared, the decision stands until the next organizational meeting or until the office is vacated in accordance with the policy. The Board has no authority under Policy 7 to retroactively validate or redo a declared election result unless the policy itself is formally amended to permit such action. A motion to revote would therefore be out of order as it attempts to reopen a completed election contrary to the established Board Policy and the standard parliamentary procedure.
Thank you so very much. Having felt that that point of order was going to be brought forward, it also states in Board Policy that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed procedurally and in Robert's Rules, and I will quote you right now specifically where it states. Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition, Section 35, rescind or amend something previously adopted. This section permits an assembly to cancel or modify a previously adopted action when it is necessary to correct a procedural error or ensure proper process. Motion to rescind is used to strike out an entire main motion, resolution, order, or rule previously adopted. Policy 8 Board Operations of Red Deer Public School Division. At the organizational meeting, the Board shall elect one of its members to serve as Chair and one of its members to serve as Vice Chair in accordance with the procedures outlined herein. Elections shall be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. So, Robert's Rules of Order allows it to ultimately.
Absolutely. So, given the procedural irregularities during the October 31st organizational meeting, including the Chair's dual role as Presiding Officer and Returning Officer, the retrieval of the ballots after being discarded, and the lack of transparency and documentation of the vote count, I have lost confidence in the integrity of the current process. Proceeding with another election under the same conditions would compound these issues rather than resolve them.
Thank you very much. Trustee Summers, do you have a resolution on how to proceed?
I therefore submit that any motion to revote is out of order until such time as Policy 7 is reviewed and amended to find a neutral Chair and Returning Officer with clear procedural safeguards ensuring transparency, fairness, and new process.
I thank you so very much, Trustee Summers. I was not the Presiding Officer or Returning Officer for that election, as you are aware, as this entire Board is also aware and what transpired as a result of said meeting. So, at this time, I do not believe that there is a point of order, but I would suspect that Trustee Summers will want it to be brought to the Board. Therefore, I am impartial. So, would the Board like to add the motion or agenda item of 10.1 Board Operations? Those opposed? It needs a two-third majority, which is five on a Board of seven. Therefore, Board Operations will be added to the agenda as 10.1. Trustee McCully?
If I may make a suggestion to possibly alleviate the concerns with phoning. May I do that at this time?
Can we discuss that when 10.1 is discussed as a Board?
Absolutely.
Sorry, did I add Superintendent Board Support to the agenda? Superintendent Board Support will be added as 10.2. Are there any other additions, changes, errors to the agenda? With that, everything from 10.1 in the current agenda will shift down. And I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Trustee Barrett Smith, all those in favor? All those opposed? Please have the minutes recorded. In this Board Meeting Agenda, there is no recognition. Therefore, we will go into our Governance Agenda, 10.1 Board Operations. This item was brought by Trustee Waters. I will hand the floor over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to request in addition to the Agenda under Governance Agenda titled Board Operations: Procedural Concern. What are operations procedural concerns? Due to a procedural concern with the earlier Vice Chair election, the correct and legitimate step up or step under Robert's Rules of Order and Red Deer Public School Division Policy 8 Board Operation is not to hold another election directly, but instead to make a motion to rescind and redo the previous action. This ensures the Board's proceeds properly meet transparency and protects both the integrity of the process and the legitimacy of the outcome. The motion. Therefore, it resolved that the Board of Trustees rescind the previous motion, resolve the election for the previous, for the position of Vice Chair due to the identified procedural concern and that a new election for the position of Vice Chair be conducted in accordance with Policy 8 Board Operations and Robert Rules of Order.
Thank you very much, Trustee Waters. I don't have the floor for discussion at this time.
Board Operations is Policy 7.
Correction on Board Policy is 7. Floor is open for discussion. With the motion on the floor, does anyone need it re-read? All those in favor? Opposed? Can I please have the minutes show? Five to two. With that being said, we do have a motion now on the floor that has been supported to go into an election for the position of Vice Chair. I will open up the discussion as Trustee McCully had stated there were some comments that she would like to make.
Thank you, Chair Buchanan. I would like to suggest that during this vote, if there is more than one individual that is being nominated, that each trustee writes a name on a piece of paper instead of checking off a name and that there's three people in the counting that are not trustees.
Thank you very much, Trustee McCully. Is anyone opposed to the suggestion brought forward by Trustee McCully? At this time, I would open up the nomination for the role of Vice Chair. Trustee Waters?
I'd like to nominate Diane McCully as the position of Vice Chair.
Thank you. For that nomination, Trustee Waters. Trustee McCully, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Second call for the position of Vice Chair. Trustee Angela Summers?
I'd like to nominate myself for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Third and last call for the nomination of the position of Vice Chair. Seize none, I would look for a motion to seize nomination. Trustee Waters, thank you very much, all those in favor? At this time, there is two trustees who have been nominated for the position of Vice Chair, one being nominated by Trustee Waters. I will allow the nominator an opportunity to speak to that nomination.
Thank you, Chair. It is my honor to nominate Trustee Diane McCully for the position of Vice Chair of the Board. Diane and I have, Diane and I had the privilege of serving together as trustees for several terms now. And while we were always agreed or seeing every issue in exactly the same way, we've come to deeply respect Diane's dedication of professionalism and her commitment to what's best for students, staff, and our community. Over the past two years, I've had the opportunity to watch Diane serve in the leadership role of Vice Chair, working closely alongside both the Chair and the Superintendent as they navigated our Board and Division through the challenging and complex times. In that role, Diane has provided steady, thoughtful leadership, always focused on collaboration, integrity, and respect. One of regretted strength is creating a safe and open space where all voices can be heard and where trustees can engage in meaningful, respectful dialogues. Even when perspectives differ, that quality has strengthened our Board and has helped ensure that decisions are made with the best interest of students and our Division at heart. Having seen the positive impact of your leadership on the Chair, on our Board, and the Division as a whole, I believe Diane brings exactly the balance experience and teamwork we need in the role of Vice Chair. It is for that reason I am proud to place Trustee Diane McCully's aid forward for the position of Vice Chair of Red Deer Public School Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Waters. Trustee McCully, would you like to speak to the nomination?
Thank you very much, I would, Chair Buchanan. Thank you, fellow trustees. It has been an honor to serve as Vice Chair for the Red Deer Public School Board. Over the first past term, I worked to build strong relationships, support good governance, and keep our focus where it belongs, on our students. We faced many challenges, but together we've made progress in advancing student success, inclusion, and staff well-being. I believe consistency and collaboration are essential for effective leadership, and I want to continue that work. With your support, I'll continue to serve with integrity, balance, and dedication to public education and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Trustee McCully. Trustee Angela Summers, would you like to speak to the nomination of Vice Chair?
I'm putting my name forward for the position of Vice Chair. The Red Deer Public School Board has a proud history, one that stretches back more than a century as a cornerstone of democracy in our community. Public education is the foundation of a free and fair society, and this Board represents that ideal every day. Each of us comes to this table as an individual elected to represent the people of Red Deer together. We share a responsibility for the health of this Division and the well-being of our students, staff, and families. It's a responsibility I take deeply to heart. Throughout my previous term, I've shown up for our schools, for our students, parents, and staff. I've listened, I've learned, and advocated for truly public education that is transparent, inclusive, and equitable. Leadership is about relationships. Over the past term, I've built strong connections with our community, including the City Council and our Mayor, because collaboration is how we protect and strengthen public education. We face significant challenges ahead, including new provincial legislations such as Bill 51. These are serious issues, and they require informed, steady, and connected leadership. Between the Chair and myself, we have relationships across the city and beyond that position and beyond that position of this Board to advocate effectively for our students and schools. If chosen as Vice Chair, I will continue to serve with transparency, inclusion, and commitment, ensuring that every trustee's voice is valued and that our work remains rooted in public good. Thank you for your confidence and for your shared dedication to truly public education in Red Deer.
Thank you very much, Trustee Summers. With that, the ballots will be handed around. Ballots do have the. Just write the name on the back. There are two trustees that are being nominated for the position of Vice Chair. Please either write to Trustee Diane McCully or Trustee Angela Summers, and do not mark an X or a check as discussed previously. Thank you. Superintendent Erickson?
Yeah, just asking that Erin and Colin are going to the kitchen for a minute.
My phone hasn't been charged.
Not a matter of fact. Just getting some instructions.
You're just gonna be.
Maybe we use.
She just used this.
We can't afford a nice shiny gold bowl.
You hope she's mine.
Write my name.
Yeah.
Do you have my action?
Yeah. I like the idea of this down.
I think it's a good idea. Really? You're done already?
Yeah.
I'd like to congratulate Diane McCully as elected for Vice Chair with a vote of five to two.
Thank you, I'm honored to continue serving and committed to working together for the success of every student and the betterment of the Board. Appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, Trustee McCully. I would like to make a motion that the ballots not be destroyed and be sealed and secured for a period of one month from today's date. All those in favor of the motion? I'll move on to 10.2. This motion is being brought forward by me even though the Superintendent does not want me to do this. Something our Board felt needed to happen at this time. Over the past several years, our Division has continued to navigate both opportunities and challenges with professionalism, collaboration, and a shared commitment to students. Throughout this time, the Board has benefited from strong and steady leadership from our Superintendent Chad Erickson, whose work has reflected the principles and expectations outlined in Board Policy 12, Role of the Superintendent. As a Board, it is important that we periodically acknowledge and affirm the trust and confidence we place in our Superintendent. This relationship is foundational to the success of our Division, our staff, and most importantly, our students. With that, I'd like to bring forward the following motion. That the Board of Trustees of Red Deer Public School Division acknowledge and convey its continued confidence and support in the Superintendent of Schools and the fulfillment of the duties and responsibilities as outlined in Board Policy 12, Role of the Superintendent. Further, that the Board recognize the Superintendent's ongoing leadership, professionalism, and commitment to fostering a respectful, collaborative, and student-centered culture within the Division. I would open up the floor to discussion at this time. Trustee McCully? Or sorry, Vice Chair McCully?
Thank you very much, Chair Buchanan, for bringing this forward. One of the things that I've learned over the past 20 years, and I am always learning, is the value of our Superintendent. And I have had the opportunity to be a trustee with a few different superintendents at the helm. And this sums up exactly what I've been thinking the last couple weeks, last couple of years with Superintendent Erickson. You have went above and beyond and showed a characteristic and. You've been a leader and a leader that I strive to be like one day when I grow up, which I hope will be one day. And your heart is bigger than your head, if I just may say that. At times, that gets you into trouble, but the trouble you get into because of it still makes you sleep at night. So, thank you for putting this forward, Chair Buchanan, and I support this 100%.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other trustees on the, Trustee Waters?
I'd like to take the opportunity also to say thank you, Chad, for your leadership. Over the years, I've gotten to know you and, you know, you've got vision that I've really never seen before from someone else. You really seem to think it, dream it, or whatever, but we're doing it, and I think it's really great. And I also like to thank your right-handed man. Well, sometimes he's your right, sometimes he's your left, but this time he's your right-handed man for what he does as well. We've got great leadership from the top down. If it began, it wasn't for the leadership we have, we wouldn't be where we're at. Thank you.
Trustee Davis? I just wanted to give the quick opportunity as a new trustee to say that in my past dealings as a non-trustee, even though we disagreed on things, it was done in a very respectful manner. And you always listen, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Barrett Smith?
And I just want to say as well, as somebody who is new to the trusteeship here, I've heard many, many things said about our Superintendent and never once have they ever been negative. And that is a true achievement. Thank you very much for all the things you've brought.
Trustee Dolestra?
Yeah. Hey. Your name has been around my table for many years and in a very good way. And at my house. I'm new to this table as well. And yeah, it's never, you've never come up in a point of concern. You're always brought up as a, this is a plan, this is where we're going. And that, for me and my household and for a lot of people that I speak to, that's, thank you for that.
Seeing no other individuals on the speakers list, I will close. I want to say thank you. I have seen you navigate some extremely difficult times, not only personally, but professionally. And that is admirable. And I appreciate the relationship that we have had in lots of things that we've encountered together. And I want you to know that it is recognized, acknowledged, and appreciated. And that is why this motion is being brought forward. Having no one else on the speakers list, all those in favor? Andrew?
I have a conflict with the comments.
Can you please have the minutes show? Trustee Summers abstaining from the motion. And yes, to answer your question, you can. Fair enough. 10.3 Enrollment Summary Report, Deputy Dan Lowery.
Thank you very much. So, before you have our enrollment report, and typically what I do whenever I open this up or receive this is take a look at the column at the bottom that says diff, which means the difference in our month-over-month results. And right away, it jumped out at me, and it probably might have kicked me to look at this, is that we had a decrease in enrollment of 111 students from September to October. And really sort of made me ponder what's going on, given, you know, what was going on in our schools at the time when they were actually, you know, for a period of time in October, not actually in as well. So, I had to dig a little bit deeper to figure out what's going on. And if you take a look at the line that says North Cottage there, and you'll see a difference of 85 students from what they reported in September. What we've discovered is an accounting error, I think. What we've discovered is an accounting error, I think, that occurred, running an accounting error. But I think when the data was taken from North Cottage, they had finalized their numbers in time for a September 30th count. Like should have been done probably and resulted in an overstatement of the number of students in their school, which has now been corrected in here. So, you know, functionally, what that means, I think, when I gave this report to the board in October, the previous board in October noted that we were down 16 students from the previous September of 2024. We probably should have been down around 90 students, not the 16 it was because those kids were never in our division. They just were not removed in time for that count, but then our people down here did their count. So that's not good news overall for our division as well. I don't know what it means in terms of funding in a regular year. You know, it would be worse slightly right now under the way moving average and we'd pay for it at a later date. But so far, I guess that's how we'll proceed, but I'm not sure how that's going to affect us.
Yeah, I think it's important for the board to know that at North Cottage, it's typically our year four, year five students that are funded at 50%, 25%. 50% for year four, 25% for year five. So while the number is is larger, the impact towards the division from budget perspective is going to be less.
Trustee Waters.
So do we, uh, do we have a correct number now for North Cottage? As far as, is it 90 now or is it 85? Or are we still overall minus 111?
So the correct number at North Cottage is 244 full-time equivalent students. That is the correct number.
Okay, so there's no difference of zero then for difference.
No, but if you see that that 85 refers to a decrease from the September number, so that is the correct number now.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other individuals on the speakers list. We will move on to 10.4. Lindsay Thirber Comprehensive High School Field Study Proposal, Deputy Dan Lauer.
Thank you very much. Just for the benefit of our new trustees, we have a main procedure 260 that allows our schools to request permission for field trips and field studies. Category three field studies, which are studies that involve students in Canada. The first two category field trips go directly to the superintendent. Category three field trips go to the board for approval. Because it is the board that ensures our students and our teachers while they're away from the country. And there's a higher level of concern when our kids and our staff are leaving their country. So they're brought before you. We're in the process of right now of creating that administrative procedure. I'm sure sometime we'll be able to bring it before the board for some approval on it because it's getting a little bit outdated. It refers to dollar values that are no longer able even to be achieved, I think, in travel amounts to be some travel increase. But typically, the process of approval, we require our field studies to be related to a curriculum. And we require that all safety measures and training are put in place to, you know, ensure a safe trip as we possibly can. And so what you have before here today, and you'll probably receive five, six, seven of these throughout the year. But what you see before you today is a proposal from Lindsay Thirber High School through the principal on behalf of their Japanese teacher, Mr. Dahara. He's been to Lindsay Thirber last year. And he is requesting that the board prove a field study to Japan next year. And he's got the approximate dates estimating where I believe our spring break will fall because we haven't developed our 2627 break times calendar yet. So sort of trying to anticipate where those would be around our traditional Easter time. And they provide a cost estimate. They're required to inquire, you know, with travel agents as to what this might be so they can present it to the board. This trip centers primarily around the Japanese curriculum. And what you'll also see over your time as trustees here is that a large number of our language programs submit these requests. They use it as one of the ways to help, you know, sort of a culmination of their studies that they have done at the end of grade 12. You heard earlier today, you know, we also do a French immersion not outside the country, but they go to come back. And it's just been a history of our language programs to help celebrate what they've learned. We, you know, we use that language and what they've learned in the country where they're at. So there's this proposal to go to Japan. What we also ask them to do is show where what other kind of cross-curricular competencies can be covered through this trip, and that's in the report that you have seen before you. Part of this process, we have our Director of International Students and Second Ages, Mr. Plasto, review the curricular objectives. And if they're not quite up to snuff or seem to be in question, he works with people that are sponsoring and requesting his field studies. We also have our occupational health and safety officer, James Regan, to review the safety protocols and procedures put in place to make sure that the best planning has been done and that there are safety protocols in place. And before we bring it to the board, we get there, okay, the gross things are in order. So when we bring it to the board, we can be assured that we've bested our ability. We planned for things and reasons for going on a trip curricularily are in place. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have from this.
Page 28 to 50.
Thank you very much. Please direct your, to be on the speakers list of the chair. I open up the floor to trustees at this time to be put on the speakers list. Trustee Waters.
Thank you. Uh, page 28 to 50, risk mitigation before leaving. Talk about two things, vaccinations. It says it's recommended that vaccinations are up to date as per travel. I'll stick with the on that. Because it says it's recommended, it's not a is or what or must be.
Yeah, that's right. So they provide to parents, and that's really a parental decision that we leave to parents. So they, if you can go on that website, click on that link, and depending on where you're going, there would be different requests for, you know, or different suggestions for vaccinations. But, you know, deny kids opportunities based on vaccinations.
Same with COVID?
Any.
According to airlines, if they say it has to be or you have to have whatever.
Well, typically, we haven't traveled during those times, so I can't really answer you on that one.
Okay.
They would need to meet any regulations required to get on the airline that they're booking, but that hasn't, I don't think we're across.
Can you tell me something about our medical insurance? Because apparently you can get more. So is it, do we have adequate, as you call it? I mean, why would we need to get more for providing? I'm just saying, is, is, no, we, are we not?
I might turn that over to our trustee.
I would say that we do have adequate medical coverage, but it's, I would say up to the parent if they feel that they want to get additional coverage because it makes them feel better, but I would recommend that the coverage that we have.
That leads me to a couple of else that as part of our admin procedure, we require our principals and trip organizers to constantly monitor the Member of Canada's travel website on any alerts that might be in place. And the board has the ability to any time up to the time of travel to cancel their permission. We do have coverage now that if that were, there are certain stipulations. But if the board does cancel for reasons, then their parents are reimbursed. But our parents also sign on knowing that they, there's a chance they might lose money at a certain point in time if something untowards what happened. So our worst, as you can imagine, was around COVID and the cancellations and things that happened. And we managed, like I would, to try and do as best as we could. We could be all about the big loss, deposits and things from that travel not happening. And you have the ability at any time to say, no, this trip's not going.
Thank you. I do not have any other trustees on my speakers list at this time. I'd be looking for a motion. Vice Chairman McCully.
I would like to move that we approve this field request from Lindsay Thirber High School.
Can the wording be?
Yes, please.
Um, that the Board of Trustees approved the proposed Lindsay Thirber Comprehensive High School trip to Kanza Region, Japan from March 26 to April 3, 2027.
So moved.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Very good. 10.5 Introduction to IAP2: An Alignment to Education Plan Priorities. It is my pleasure and privilege to have Erin Black and Mandy Dietrich. Dietrich, sorry. I'm not always going to pull the pronunciations.
Oh, really? Good afternoon, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share something we're really excited about. A new way of thinking about how we engage our community. As you already know, I'm Mandy Dietrich, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent. And this is Erin Black, Communications Specialist for the Division.
We're here to introduce you to IAP2, which is the International Association for Public Participation. And to talk about how this framework will shape the future of engagement for Red Deer Public Schools and how it aligns with our education plan priorities.
Having just completed our IAP2 Certificate in Public Participation, we are excited to share how these principles and tools can build a purposeful, strategic, and focused approach to community involvement in board decision-making.
So Red Deer Public Schools has always valued engagement from school councils to focus groups, surveys, and community meetings. But what IAP2 gives us is structure, consistency, and shared language for how we involve our community in decisions.
Effective governance depends on listening to those most impacted by decisions. And the way we engage matters just as much as the decisions we ultimately make.
Just a little bit of history about some engagement that we've had in recent years and some of the tools that we've used. We have used online platforms before. One was called Thought Exchange, and it would gather people's ideas and their feedback, and other stakeholders could go and rate those ideas and sort of it was kind of a rating system. And you could see sort of what rose above, and that that was really great. The one challenge I would say with that is it did have, it did ask stakeholders to come back to the platform multiple times to continue engaging with it, which, I mean, all of our time is precious, and we want to respect the time of of our audiences and our stakeholders. We've also used town halls. We've done lots of student engagement, which we'll talk about in a little bit as an example. School councils, of course, is a great engagement tool. Citywide School Council as well. Internally, we have our Admin Council, our Teacher Voice, our Student Voice. We've had that in the past. And then in the last year and a half, we've used an online engagement platform called Social Pinpoint. So that brings people to a webpage that we designed. And it's got about eight to 10 different engagement tools that we can use for whatever our needs are at that engagement time. And it's really great because you can set out a really concrete timeline. It gives users the ability to look at all the history if they choose to. And then on the backend, it gives us a really great comprehensive report, so you can really see clearly what ideas and feedback our stakeholders are giving. And in our conversations with Social Pinpoint as well, we do talk with that engagement platform, the representatives there. They're really impressed with how highly engaged our stakeholders are, and they said we do get a ton of feedback. So just wanting to capitalize on that and and ask our stakeholders, they want, they want to be involved, which is great.
IAP2, or the International Association for Public Participation, is a global organization that sets standards and best practices for public participation. It is used by governments, municipalities, and school divisions across Canada with all with the same goal, to make sure community voices purposely and strategically influence decisions.
So IAP2 isn't just about public relations or communications. It's really about that participation piece. It's about ensuring that people know how their input fits into decision-making and that engagement is purposeful and transparent as well. So at the heart of IAP2 is something called the Spectrum of Public Participation, and it outlines five levels of engagement from simply informing people to fully empowering them to make decisions.
Let's quickly walk through what it looks like in practice here at Red Deer Public. Inform is on the far left-hand side. Inform provides balanced and objective information. This is one-way communication.
So an example of this that we already do in our practice would be sharing board highlights on our website, social media, and to local media. So we're simply informing our families and staff and students in the community about decisions that were made around this table.
And we, as we move to the right, we come to consult. And at the consult level, we would seek feedback and alternatives on our own decisions.
So an example of this is our Teacher Voice group led by our superintendent. And that's a group of educators, typically one teacher from each school who come together three to four times a year to share ideas and perspectives on a variety of issues. An agenda is set ahead of time, so they know what to expect. But their feedback could influence decisions.
In the middle of the spectrum, we land at Involved. Here is where we engage more directly through focus groups or workshops to better understand people's concerns and perspectives.
An example of where we've sat at this level is in the fall of 2024, we asked families through a survey about their thoughts and ideas about going back to school after the September long weekend. We had done that in the fall of 2024, typically before that going, having a perceived school back before the long weekend. So we had a really great response, and overwhelmingly, families wanted to go back after that long weekend. And so we put that into practice this year.
Next level is Collaborate. And collaborate is true partnership. It's like working with staff, families, and community members to establish long-term plans.
So another example of this, and I think I call it a happy accident, but it's one of my favorites. I had the pleasure with some of the trustees, our former trustees as well, and Superintendent Erickson, to go to a number of schools to talk about students. We had a student-led engagement. So we brought 10 to 12 students together over the lunch hour from a variety of schools. We would travel around as to the number of weeks. And Superintendent Erickson asked two very simple questions to get the discussion started. One was, what makes a great day at school and what makes a great day go bad? And you can imagine the response that we got. It was really incredible. But I think an overarching theme and something that was really highlighted and maybe a little bit, you know, surprising at the level that it was highlighted was bullying at schools that came out. So that was taken back and really taken to heart. And out of that engagement came a program aimed at preventing discrimination and bullying called WITS. So please correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Erickson, but we we started that in K to three last year and then have added.
K to five.
Okay, to five last year. Okay, perfect. Yeah.
And we're adding the second part called Leads.
Perfect. Yes, thank you so much. So that's, that's an example of that true collaboration as the students told us, you know, what they were seeing and feeling in school and and we have a program to help with that.
And our highest level of engagement is Empower. This is when decision-making rests with the public. For example, school-based decisions made through school councils or student voice initiatives.
Yeah, so as Mandy mentioned, an example would be at the school level. So through their school council, they would plan, decide, and plan and execute school fundraisers and events that's left to that school council. As a division, there are not many times that we would engage at this level, but the option is there for sure. So the key with all of these levels is is not that every decision requires the same level of engagement, but every decision deserves intentional engagement. And an important takeaway when we were doing our IAP2 training was the amount of time that it takes before the actual engagement happens, before that activity can take place. So depending on the size of the engagement, up to 80% of that work is done in the planning phase. So when moving forward with an engagement, it's just budgeting for that time is really key and even that it might. So why does this matter for Red Deer Public and to the Board of Trustees? Because engagement isn't something we just do. It's not a checkbox. It's part of how we build credibility, trust, and trust with our families, staff, and partners.
By using the IAP2 framework, we can strengthen trust and transparency, identify and emphasize key stakeholder groups, make sure diverse voices and hidden populations are heard, especially those who might not usually participate. IAP2 ensures we design an engagement that captures their voices too, not just those who are the easiest to reach. So decisions reflect the most representative voices, not just the loudest. We also will share the responsibility for decisions that impact students and families. But ultimately, the framework ensures that decisions are supported by the education plan.
When people feel heard, they feel valued, and that builds support for public education as well. So it really helps us avoid that over-promising and under-delivering. And that's why it's really important to take the time to set this foundation.
IAP2 strengthens governance and by clarifying rules, building trust, and reinforcing disciplined decision-making. It builds, it helps the board. It helps the board stay in its governance lane and reduces risk by ensuring engagement occurs before decisions are made, reinforcing the board's assurance role.
IAP2 also falls under our Local and Societal Context pillar in our three-year education plan as it ensures diverse perspectives and lived experiences are respectfully reflected when decisions have community impact. This helps ensure we hear from a broad range of perspectives.
When we think about why engagement sometimes fails, it's often not because people disagree with the decision. It's because they don't understand how the decision was made or where their voices fit in.
IAP2 also provides clear process for setting expectations early on in the process. It helps us define what is in scope and what is not in scope, and at what level of influence the public will have before engagement begins. And this is really important in communicating that with our public as well. So this prevents frustration later when people realize that the outcome doesn't match what they thought they were being asked about, which I think is common in community engagement.
Structured engagement creates transparency. When stakeholders see how their input is gathered, analyzed, and considered, it builds trust, even among those who don't necessarily agree with the final decision. Trust grows when the process is open and consistent.
So by communicating the decision process upfront and engaging at the right time, the board and administration demonstrate authenticity. IAP2 supports meaningful engagement early in the process before decisions are finalized so it doesn't feel like a formality.
IAP2 emphasizes closing the loop, reporting back to participants what we heard, what we learned, and how that feedback influenced the outcome. This accountability step is essential for building trust, credibility, and long-term relationships.
When engagement follows a structured, transparent process like this, decisions are more defensible as well. The board can demonstrate that choices were made through a disciplined, fair, and evidence-informed process, reducing governance risk and reinforcing public confidence in the division's leadership.
In short, IAP2 doesn't just make engagement better. It protects the integrity of the board's governance role by ensuring every engagement is purposeful, aligned, and defensible.
So before any engagement begins, we'll develop a short brief that outlines six key elements. These elements are what give structure, clarity, and discipline to the process and protects the board's governance role as well.
Firstly, we will define the purpose and scope. This is where we will understand why we are engaging, what we're actually asking. And this prevents us from leaving our lane, making assumptions, and sending mixed messages.
Secondly, we'll determine the level on the IAP2 spectrum. As mentioned, not every engagement is at the same depth. Naming the level early on clarifies how much influence the public will have in the decision and avoids people believing it is at the consultation level, for example, when it's actually at the inform level. So the key is managing expectations and building that trust.
Our third step is determining who our stakeholders are. Through this process, it will be made clear which groups are being engaged, which voices are critical, and discover the hidden populations and how representation will be balanced.
Next, we'll outline how we will gather input and when. This ensures we will know how information is flowing and what to expect before a decision is made.
Our fifth step is finding out what is influenceable and what is not. This is one of the most important governance safeguards. This prevents over-promising and protects the division from being seen as committing to outcomes that can't be delivered.
And lastly, we'll determine how success will be measured. This ensures that engagement is not just an activity, but strategic and purposeful. And we can see a criteria for a successful, defensible process.
Overall, this strengthens clarity, protects governance boundaries, and ensures the division can competently demonstrate that engagement is meaningful, purposeful, focused, and strategic, not just performative.
So IAP2 gives us a great toolbox of methods that go beyond surveys. Over our week-long training, Mandy and I had an opportunity to try out a number of methods. So our toolboxes are full, which is great. So depending on the situation, we can use community workshops or focus groups, online engagement platforms like we have in Social Pinpoint, pop-up booths or open houses, advisory committees, citizen panels, and deliberative dialogue activities where participants work together to find common ground. And that's really great for some divisive or contentious issues.
These tools help us move from one-way communication to meaningful two-way conversations. We are excited to bring IAP2 into future community engagements. On the screen are several upcoming areas where we can begin applying this methodology, including classroom complexity, program design, and future school boundary discussions. The board will also have influence in identifying additional engagement priorities in the upcoming years.
So this approach will help us choose the right level of participation for each types of these decisions and more, being deliberate about when and how we engage. And this is really, Mandy and I really feel that this is the start of a culture shift, one where engagement isn't just an afterthought, but at the core of what we do and how we operate. So IAP2 gives us a purposeful, strategic, and focused approach in how we engage. It ensures our community knows how their voices are heard and how their feedback will influence decisions.
By embracing IAP2, Red Deer Public will continue to strengthen trust, transparency, and collaboration and build stronger connections with those we serve. We are really excited about this approach forward and looking forward to working with the board as we integrate IAP2 into our future community engagement activities.
Together, we'll continue to build strong schools for purposeful, strategic, and focused participation. And I just wanted to thank our Superintendent Erickson for believing in us and allowing us to take this training. As you can hear in Mandy's voice, we're very excited. We can't wait to start using some of this method. And we're hoping to progress.
Thank you so very much. At this time, I will open up the floor to trustees. Just go ahead, Erickson.
Just I managed to hear their presentation a few times outside my office, and they got better each and every time. Just from my perspective, I'm really excited about what this will bring to our division and our engagement process. It'll be far more clear than what we've ever done in the past. And it'll just give some direction. And then we'll be able to communicate why we're seeking the information. And I think it's excellent. Thanks for taking the training.
Thank you.
Trustee Summers? I have a couple of questions. So you said that it will allow you to capture all the voices and identify hidden populations. How, what sort of methods do you do to do that?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different methods that help us narrow down an audience or kind of focus in on who we want to engage with. But one of the very easiest and was really effective ways is, you know, in the method, you gather your audiences and then you say, you take a step back and say, okay, let's name three more. And you're actually amazed at how many more groups of people that you can come up with. Like, it's way more than three. So even just with that simple, simple talk, like that simple tool, it was really, really effective. So that's just one of the methods that we can use to find those hidden populations.
And then the second question is, how do you plan to measure the success?
Well, a lot of times, the success is going to be really immediate when people are exiting a group. The goal is that people are feeling fiddle and hurt. And a lot of that will take place with exit interviews and those sorts of things as they're leaving an engagement session.
Trustee McCollum? Thank you very much. As a fellow graduate of IAP2, I was going, I remember that, I remember that. Because I didn't have the opportunity nearly to use it much after I completed the program. So I'm so excited. Like, it sounds as cheerful to you, Mandy, right now. I would, but I sounded frogged, so it just wouldn't be good. What I really like about this is it's purposeful. You know, we talk a lot about having, you know, meetings and consultations with, you know, stakeholders and sister groups. And why are we doing it? If it's just to say hi, let's do an email, right? So I really look forward to this. And when my voice gets better, I'm going to be as kiddy as you. And I'm so thankful that our Superintendent encouraged and supported you guys to take this as well because this is some good stuff here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Berks, go.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, that was just such a good presentation. You guys were like eloquent, just dripping. Thank you very much. And I'm really excited to see what comes from this. I think it's gonna be, I can hear it in your voices too. Very excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will close and say, as an IAP2 certified individual as well, I could not think of two other people that would advance something like this in our school division, like the two of you will. The engagement conversation has been a conversation our board has had a multitude of times on what that looks like, what it should look like. And I really am grateful that both of you have undergone an intensive week of ultimately getting this to bring back to Red Deer Public School Division for us to engage with our community. So thank you so very much for undergoing that. And with that, we will accept your presentation as information. Also, I'm going to apologize, but I'm going to go back. And I want to congratulate all trustees. This is our first public board meeting since the election. And not everyone may know each other. So I actually think that, again, I apologize because that's on me, that we go around, and again, this meeting is being recorded so people can know who you are. Maybe say if you're a new trustee or how many terms you have been with Red Deer Public School Division or elected as a trustee. And just, yeah, so we, because I know we have nameplates, but I don't know if anyone has ever looked at our YouTube video, but you can't really make out the nameplate. So I will start. My name is Nicole Buchanan. This is my third term. I'm elected as a trustee with Red Deer Public School Division. I am also a graduate of Red Deer Public School Division. And I have two children in the French Amargen program, one in our elementary programming and one in our middle school programming. Very grateful to be here again. And I will go this way.
Trustee Summers, this is my second term as an elected trustee for Red Deer Public. I have three kids, one graduate of Red Deer Public, and two in high school at Lindsay-Thurber. I am also a graduate of Lindsay-Thurber High School. And yeah, I love Lindsay-Thurber and I love Red Deer Public.
Mandy, I have two kids from the public system. One went through the Spanish bilingual program and then is just finishing up the Spanish bilingual program. And I'm a big fan of Red Deer Public Schools. The auctions that kids have.
And this is your first term as a new trustee.
And as I'm a rookie, I've made a rookie mistake.
Oh, good.
Triple H, I've been, I think it's like six, seven out of us. How many is? I'm no longer considered a parent of a grandparent. I have six grandchildren in school over Alberta and two that aren't in school yet, but someday, hopefully, they will be. But I'm here for all kids. This is the best cover they've had.
Thank you. Yeah, you.
Colin Kearney, Secretary Treasurer. I've been with Red Deer Public for 17 years and been sitting and attending board meetings for, I believe, 12 years.
Thank you.
I'm Erin Black. I'm the Communications Specialist for Red Deer Public Schools. I've been here eight years, and I'm still happy to be here.
Awesome. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Diane McCollough. I am current Vice Chair of Red Deer Public Schools. I'm in my 21st year of being a trustee. Charge when I started were three years long, and then they changed to four years. So that's why I just say how many years because it can get confusing. My three children went through Red Deer Public Schools. With their difference in needs and interests and long-term goals, I have been part of eight different schools in this community. So I'm very grateful for that. I grew up in Netley, though, and I still think Netley's awesome. But as a parent and trustee of Red Deer Public, I gotta say, Red Deer Public is awesomer.
Thank you very much.
I am Jason Ulstra. I'm a new trustee. I did not grow up in this. I'm kind of like Diane. I was in the Combs. So I'm a Ram. I do like the Raiders because both my children are at Thurber. So I, Ram, becoming a Raider fan. It's a tough thing. It's like NFL football. It's tough. But at that same sense, yeah, really happy to be here.
Hi, I'm Emily Barrett Smith. This is my first chair on the board. I am thrilled to be here, sitting at the table with all these wonderful people who have knowledge in many different areas. I have four children in the Red Deer Public Schools, and I attended here myself as well.
So my name is Dan Lowry, Deputy Superintendent. I've been fortunate enough to work in Red Deer Public Schools for the past 20 years and been this role for the last four years as I support the Superintendent as he supports our schools and the board.
Thank you.
Chad Erickson, Superintendent, in my sixth year in this position and 20 years with the Division as well.
Thank you very much. And again, I apologize if I've done that at the beginning. But I didn't, so I'm sorry.
Rookie mistake.
10.6, PSBA report, trustee Summers.
Well, we haven't had a meeting yet, so there's nothing really to report other than we have our AGM and extension coming up next week. Hopefully, that's our pending. And I also wanted to put out there for the new trustees, the meetings in the future for this year. So just to have them in your calendars in case you were planning on going. So February 5th and 6th, April 9th and 10th, and August 5th to 7th. And I will give you a way better report update next month.
I'll open the floor to trustees at this time if there's any questions regarding PSBA. I'll open the floor to trustees at this time, if there's any questions regarding PSBA. Trustee Summers, do you know if at PSBA, FGM, they will be discussing the modules at all?
I didn't see that.
At our, maybe not our next board meeting, but our following board meeting, maybe having a conversation about the modules for, especially our new trustees, I know there was, we could discuss ASBA modules since the learning as well.
And have, I just have a question for the new trustees. Have you tried to log into the members' portal part of PSBA yet?
No.
I think I sent an email out to everyone confirming that you'd received the email, right? And everyone had received it. We will figure that out in the next week to make sure that everyone does have access to their ASBA portals and PSBA portals. Our Vice Chairman McCollum.
Thank you for the meeting dates, as our, as Mandy has done, they're already in our calendars. So, but again, give, give notice if you want to go, because you've got a red room and get your dietary needs and everything ready. So if you just want to show up, that'll cause some headaches, but it's all in your calendars already, so plan accordingly.
Thank you very much. We'll move on in our agenda to 10.7, Trustee Community Engagement Report. In your agenda, you will see a Trustee Community Engagement Report. This was something that was brought in last term. Trustees felt that it was important to let our community know the different things that trustees are participating and going to. A lot of this is generated from our trustee calendar and inputted by Mandy. So if there is anything that needs to be added to our trustee community engagement report or you have a question on whether it should be added or not, please ask, and we will direct you in the right. Anyways, any questions with regards to trustee community engagement? Seeing none, we'll move on in our agenda to Superintendent's Report, 10.8.
Yeah, I'll just start off by saying it was a month unlike any other month I've ever had in the teaching profession. With that being said, a number of different activities took place through the month. I did forget to add one, and that is on October 28th, the meeting with our local ATA president.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions regarding the Superintendent's Report? Seeing none, we will move on to our Chair's Report. I do not have anything to report. There is correspondence attached to this agenda that I would have put in my report, but if there's any questions, I can speak to that at that time. Next in our agenda is celebrations. I will, you want to know what? I am going to start to my right, and now, next time I'm going to start, I mean, I don't know, I'll figure this out, because I do it different every time. Superintendent Erickson.
I just want to celebrate having all of our staff back in the buildings.
Thank you very much. Also, for new trustees, if you are unfamiliar with the celebration part of our agenda, we go around our board and celebrate something that is going on in our district, maybe something that you have attended or something that you'd like to recognize. You do, you can pass if you would like as well. But we do try to keep it to one for the most part, so you don't steal someone else's by the time it gets to them. Deputy Dan Lam.
I just want to celebrate the fantastic administrators we have in our school division here as a support trying to bring things back to normal. I know that it's probably that duck analogy, it would come on the surface and you're apparently crazy underneath, but they have a really good group that's working hard to support our kids and our parents and our teachers all at the same time, so good on them.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I definitely have two, but I feel like someone else will hit one of mine. So I will say mine specifically. I was, I attended the Remember and Say Ceremony at NAEL Gates, and it was absolutely phenomenal. And their ability to pull that together that quickly, I applauded them, I applauded their music teacher, and, and he had said to me, you know, this just proves that they can do it under pressure, which I thought was spectacular. There was children crying, there were veterans, it was absolutely wonderful and moving. So congratulations, I think, on that.
Trustee Ulster.
I'm going to kind of tag into that, except I was sat Fairview, excuse me. And I was talking to Jim a bit ago about how many nationalities that school represents. And, you know, you hear it when they say 40, but then you get there, it was 39, so close. But then you get there and you meet a kid that's been there, been in Canada for a week and a half and in school. And then you, they can barely speak English, and a lot of them can't even speak English yet. But then half the class gets up to go to the choir, and then they sing a song in English. They can't speak English, but they can sing English. And that was, that was like really cool. Like, if you don't have a string, huh, you're gonna have a, you think they pulled, they pulled a bell down with that? Like that's, they were, that, that school is, Teresa's, well, it's all that.
Thank you. Next.
I would like to celebrate our three-day orientation with the new board. Our superintendent and our senior admin did such a fabulous day, days, talking about what they do, what this means. It was, it was, it was a nice, easy, it wasn't quite drinking out of the hoes, but it was still a lot, but it didn't feel overwhelming. And I appreciate everyone taking their time and coming and teaching not only the newbies, the seasoned ones. Like everybody came up, learning one more thing that they did. And we talked at Zone 4 on what their new orientation was, and it looked like it was kind of consistent. Everybody did at least a couple days instead of one afternoon. So it's like that kind of ball is rolling that we need to make this really purposeful, I left that word now, and going forward. So thank you, everybody who was part of that.
Thank you very much, Erin. Thank you, Paul.
I'll pass as well.
For the board.
I'd like to celebrate the two, well, I would call it Normandie and Oriole Park. And just to see the, you know, the amount of time that they had and what they did was just phenomenal. All of these kids just going, running, and they were just, like you say, smiling and just, you know, you couldn't tell they were off. They were, they were just gung ho and ready to, ready to do whatever they had to do. It's great to see, and they're teachers again, having everybody, everybody back is great to see.
I'm going to, I want to, I want to say, thank you, thank you at Lundell School for the invitation, the opportunity to attend. You all together in wonderful and respectful, somber, Remember's Day Ceremony for the kids. I was, I was, it was a great opportunity to see the school. There were a number of parents there, which is always great to see. I also just wanted to thank them for, for giving me a tour of the school. I have to admit, I've never made it past such amazing Lundell, and there's a whole school behind the gym. So thank you very much for doing that. And thank you to, to the other, the other two schools, Mr. Grande and Perry Wilson for also inviting me. I will make it there. Remember's Day Ceremony, simply always be around 11 o'clock.
It honestly is the hardest, because if they're all on the same date, usually within the same half hour. So that's one of the most difficult things as a trustee.
I was going to say, muchas gracias to Mr. Grande and Mr. Wilson.
I'd like to say thank you to our community members who came out to vote and continue to support public education and that continue to engage with Red Deer Public. Thank you.
I would like to celebrate everyone who was elected and those that were not. It is not easy to put your name forward to run in an election and put yourself out there. So I would like to celebrate everyone who ultimately went through that process and say thank you. In believing in a fair democratic process, it is something that is required and recognizing that it is not easy. So I would like to celebrate everyone and that their name's holding on that ballot. And with that, I am sorry, I'm going to actually amend the agenda and bring correspondence from our private meeting into public, which I kind of thought it largely was. So in your private board meeting agenda, there is a letter from the Honorable Minister of Education and Childcare, Demetrius McCallies, addressed to myself. And has everyone had an opportunity to see that correspondence?
It is in public, isn't it?
It's not on our agenda to say that it is on the agenda. So it's not, it's not actually, it's in there, but it's not, anyways. It doesn't say that it's in that agenda. The correspondence is there. I would open up the floor to discussion at this time. Trustee Burks.
That was going to be my second celebration, so I'm happy bringing up. I just want to say that, happy to celebrate that our board chair here at Red Deer Public Schools has been appointed to the Committee for Classroom Complexity. I think it's just so exciting, and I'm really, really excited to have somebody here from our local district at that table. I appreciate that you accepted your appointment, and I'm excited to hear about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Ulster.
Same, I'm actually really excited that we have this in representing Red Deer Public Schools. With your appointment, how will that work? Because now we're involving political aspects that's not political, but yet it's through the government, because it's an appointment from them, so you have, really have to do it. Is there going to be a communication from the board, with the board on that direction? Or are you speaking for the board or on your own?
So I don't know if you had an opportunity to watch the press conference. I did not use the title of board chair when I am in my speaking notes and conversation. I'm not there representing Red Deer Public School Division in that capacity as the board of this school division. I am representing, or I'm appointed as a trustee. So one of the things that I value is collaboration. I would not be in the position that I am right now if it wasn't without the board. So I think having those conversations is really, really important. And kind of having the knowledge of what Red Deer Public is experiencing is a valuable conversation to bring forward to the Classroom Complexity Task Course Cabinet Committee. So I am not there as board chair. I am there as a trustee as well as a police officer. That was one of the big components with regards to that, why that appointment was made. I do wear several hats. Both of my children also have individualized hats. So I checked a couple, a couple of things. But I am very cognizant of my role as board chair and when I speak on behalf of Red Deer Public School Division and when I do not. I hope that answers that question for you.
I hope so.
Vice Chairman McCollum.
My comments and questions have already been addressed.
Just, David, you were introduced as the board chair of Red Deer Public Schools FYI.
Premier Smith actually said trustee, and then she said, and just recently chair.
Just, yeah, I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I would look for a motion to go back into private. Trustee Waters, thank you very much, all those in favor. And I would like to take a bio break. The time is 2:25. Bio break, yes. Please make it back.
I'll contact you later at school meeting.
Yeah, when you get back.
Yeah, I'm feeling better too.